And to understand as well from councillor Tom Crom as well, so you can note that. Are there any other apologies? Okay. Item two is, are there any declarations of interest? So are there any, any members feel the need to declare an interest on any of the items that are going to come up on the agenda today? Hi Sharon. No, okay. Item number three of the minutes of the last meeting, so they're on. The numbered pages one to seventeen, as you go inside the agenda, on the agenda item three. So if you just go through them very quickly, so on the first two pages, anything? Pages three and four. Five and six. Seven and eight. Nine and ten. I'm calling bingo. Eleven and twelve. Thirteen. Fourteen. And then there's the questions and answers, they're on pages fifteen to seventeen. Any masterising or corrections? Okay, so can I have someone to propose that they be accepted as a true record? Thank you councillor Croft. Seconded by anyone? Thank you councillor MacInneson. Okay, so item, if we move on to item four. To just relate, there's a note that you should all have in response to questions raised by councillor MacInneson. Are there any, are you satisfied with the responses that you've got?
I would like to come back with a few points, Chair, if I may. Can I thank the deputy mayor for the responses? When exactly did we write to the tenant? I actually visited Colmendy last week and while I was there, met with an officer from Dembisher County Council, who told me that they're weeks away from issuing an improvement notice against Liverpool. I don't really need to outline how embarrassing that potentially could be for one authority to be taking legal action against us. On the rent level, I've actually read the original lease agreement and this £50,000 rent level is unchanged from 2007 and in the lease agreement, there was actually supposed to be a reassessment of the rent level in 2017. So why hasn't that actually happened? Because the lower rent level at the time was based on the assumption that a great deal of investment was needed from Kingswood to bring it up to modern standards. So we should be charging them a lot more by now. But I'm actually more shocked at the news that there's no record of the refurbishment proposals, especially as it was actually Kingswood themselves who came up with the proposal to get Prospects 2000 to take over these listed buildings. And there's actually a real urgency for this to be considered, because the grants that have been offered from Dembisher and other organisations do require a commitment from Liverpool by Christmas or that money will be lost. And this is an opportunity for us to get these buildings completely refurbished at no cost to us, rather than having a legal obligation put against us by Dembisher. So would the cabinet member look at that please?
Chair, response, councillor Corbett, I know Lee can just indicate it as well.
Yeah, I'll tell you what, if Lee comes in first, because I'll do the historical bit as well, if Lee comes in with the details, I don't want to get that wrong, but I know what's happened before this.
Lee, thanks, Chair. The letter that was issued to the tenant was in February 2018. The question regarding the contact from Prospects 2000, from my record is that, I know you mentioned that it was discussed with the elected mayor, but there's no record on the file of those discussions taking place. The lease set up at Colmendy is that the entire estate is leased to Kingswood. So any, any kind of future changes to that lease arrangement would require the organisation to approach Kingswood and then Kingswood to approach the council as landlord.
Quick to clarify on that, it was Kingswood that came up with his proposals and went to Prospects 2000 with the idea and from there, they were approached by various other funding bodies who are offering, I think up to £5 million to refurbish the buildings. So I don't quite understand why this isn't actually in the system anywhere when Kingswood came up with the idea.
Chair, yeah, I can recheck, but there's no record, obviously Kingswood would have to approach the council and there is no record of that, but I can go check that again.
I'm conscious that probably, I don't know whether you're in a position to answer those questions or not, whether you want to be able to prepare them and send them.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I think what I'll do, councillor MacInneson, is go back and talk this through with Lee and look at the details again for you and come back to you. And one of the things that has been happening, as we know, is that when property asset management was taken out from regeneration and put under the finance directorate, and because internal audit reports have been done in fifteen and seventeen, and there was a lot of things that we had to stitch back together again, which even though they'd been raised in seventeen, as a genuine risk, high risk report with lots of risks identified, still hadn't been done. So we're stitching together a lot of things now very, very quickly. Nearly all of that is in there, this is across the estate. But there may be some bits that we need to double check, Lee, to come back to councillor MacInneson and make sure that we got absolutely right. I don't want to come back with an answer that we then had to come back again to you. So if you can bear with us. I remember well when this was transferred over, which I fought very hard back on this one, if you remember all those years ago when we were in opposition. And I remember coming up with, I think, I reckoned our children were being left with a work weekend in November, which I think councillor Khan was furious that I said, but we managed to move it forward in a reasonable way at the end of the time. Thank you.
Can I, I mean, obviously you've raised some supplementary questions there. Have you noted those, Mike? So you, do you want to check them with Mike now and then, so we can get those over to Lee to provide response to? Could you, do you want to repeat them please, Mike?
First clarification was when did LCC write to the tenants, which I believe the assistant director's already addressed and that will be factored in the notes. Second one related to the level of rent quoted in the initial written response. You queried that this doesn't appear to have been reassessed when this could be expected to have been done in 2017, which may result in a shortfall compared to what income levels would otherwise have been. Could that be confirmed? And in relation to the points on the record of proposals on refurbishment from Kingswood to LCC, of which the assistant director's confirmed to date, there's no record related to the property file.
Is that okay?
That's very helpful, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so there's no other, there are no other questions, so move on to item number five, which is the cabinet member update.
Do you want me to go through that, Chair? Yes, because you had it in a supplementary. First of all, just to say, I'm sorry that this was late because I try and get these on time, rather than have them as a supplementary, but I was actually away to a family funeral up in Shetland and couldn't even get online. So there was a bit of a delay, so apologies for that. So what I've done is I've used the same layout as, for consistency. So you can see what my responsibilities are and you can see what my current priorities are. And then if you look over on the page ninety, on page ninety-six, it then goes through where I'm up to with various of those priorities. On the first one, the discretionary and community grants, the review of those, I was really hoping to bring that to this meeting, to be honest with you, but we're still waiting for some clarification on a couple of, a couple of the grants. So as soon as those ready, they will come through. They may actually end up going to the cabinet, as a cabinet report on the twenty-second of October, but obviously they'll be online for everybody to see. It's crucial that we look at this because we're trying to go through all of the money that we've got, how we use it, trying to ensure that there's no duplication, trying to make sure that the conditions of those grants were adhered to, and then try and work our way forward, knowing how hard this next budget is going to be, it's going to be very, very difficult. So we need to target the money that we've got, specifically the discretionary money and discretionary grants, very, very carefully. And that list will also include the city, mayor's city fund as well. So several, so we've got several years going backwards. I wanted to get us a sweep of what we've done, so that we can learn lessons, pick out really good practice and move forward. Review of community asset transfers. Again, Lee has been brilliant on pulling all of those lists together. So again, I'm just looking through all of those at the moment and they should be done in the next few weeks and then a strong report will then be brought to select committee members. Again, it's worth noting that the commissioners will need to look at how we move forward on this and sign that off. That's part of their remit, as it comes on to property asset management. There's some very good draft strategies that have been put together by Lee and the team and I'm looking at the consistency going all of those. So once you get them, they'll be absolutely spot on with all those details there. It'll also look, the top line on that will be about best value. And I think what's crucial is that we show the social, environmental and economic value of all that we're doing. That's quite difficult sometimes for communities to show, because they know the work that they're doing and how valuable it is. But when you actually have to write it down and say, well, that might be worth this, that's where it's quite hard. And I think once we've gone through a couple of these, I think people will get the hang of that and we'll, sorry, you'll know as a select committee what to look for. And we show the commissioners what we're doing, they understand what we're considering to be best value, they can see market rent and if we go below that, they know why. So it's all transparent. The key thing is that it's transparent and we can track it through. So if we drop that from market rent down to a low one and do some form of discount, the rent level is there and we show what that gap is and why. The same for community use of council assets, and I deliberately split those out, because if you think of our buildings that we've got and our land, several times there have been opportunities for the community or the voluntary organisations within neighbourhoods to be able to use our buildings and our land as a council in very innovative ways and also brings in external funding. Some of those tend to be licences for six or 12 months and sometimes they're short leases as well. So I'm trying to split them out so we can see actually what we're talking about, rather than just seeing everything as community asset transfers. Then we've got the corporate asset management, which I mentioned before, and the two crucial internal audit reports, which I would think would probably, will be looked at under the audit, by the audit committee. So I'm sure I'll be called over to the audit committee to speak to those at some point. One was in 2015, which warned that we were on a bad trajectory and we needed to put into place various things to lessen the risks. And in seventeen, when we hadn't responded, and so there were very high, both of those, the last one showed very high risk on several things. For example, rent collection, information, the different parts of the system talking to each other, how much the heat bills, the energy bills were, whether we knew what they were, what about the insurance? Did we know where buildings were actually sold on and we didn't need to pay for insurance or the heat on it? So there's several things there and again, a lot of it is putting all the jigsaw pieces together in one place, which then means that the select committee can look at that and also we can move forward. On the one-stop-shop provision, I apologise because the, there's a bit missing here, Mike, which I sent through. So it might be that we put, you've got the timetable there, but there's actually a report that goes with that. So I don't know whether we could just send that out straight away afterwards, which gives an update on the responses from people coming into the one-stop shops, how they're finding that, the staff and all the transitions over. It's about two pages, so I think you'll find it really useful, so apologies for that. And Alison, I think we've just started, we've just opened Central as well, and that's the ten till six one-stop shop. And that was crucial for people to be able to go to one where if they're picking up their kids from school and if they're going to town, they can still access the one-stop-shop. Then we've got the inclusive, sorry, we've got the use of the Marmot framework, that's absolutely crucial. So that went to the health and wellbeing board the other day and it links up directly with what the Food Foundation is saying and also I found the Independent Food Aid Network about the damage that is being done to people's lives by government policies. There's a direct impact from what the government have done. They haven't done equality impact assessments properly, I would argue, and the impact on people's lives is extreme and will very, very quickly get a lot worse with the £20 uplift being removed, with fuel costs going up very quickly, with food costs going up really quickly, and for those who work with national insurance also going up. There is a fund that the government have just released today or information on it called the Household Budget Fund, which sounds like it's, actually it's the Emergency Welfare Fund. So we'll look at that and we'll find out how much our allocation is. I'm hoping, where's Peter? I'm hoping it's 0.9, like it was last time, because we did that again, we pushed very hard for the needs analysis on that. Inclusive budget setting, that's coming on us very quickly. I'm about 10 days behind with this because of going up to Shetland. Our City, Our Future, Your Say, we're doing a pause on that on the eighth of October. So I've done some videos on that and I'm getting the word out on those. We've had just over 500 responses, which is not too bad, but we can get a lot more than that. And I'm encouraging children as well as adults to fill them in and you can do it using a QR code and you can do it on the back of a postcard. And also the unions, the students, the voluntary organisations, the businesses. And we've got the Marmot workshop coming up and the Living Income Campaign is something that is very close to everybody's hearts in this, in this chamber and beyond, where regardless of whether you're in work or out of work, you should always have a living income, one that actually fits with the Marmot policy action, which is to ensure a healthy standard of living for all, unless that comes in, we are in, we have serious problems getting worse. The JTO, working with the Joint Trade Union Committee and council, I'm meeting with them again next week. And the aim of that is to be proactive with them as well as, for them to be proactive as well as reactive. So that will be very difficult for all of us with the budget coming up, because it's such an extreme budget in terms of the funding that we've been left with by the government. Delegated Authority reports carry on going through. Thank you Chair.
Okay, thanks councillor Corbett. Councillor MacInneson.
Thank you Chair. On the issue of overdue rent, have we got an estimate yet of how much of the seven million that was identified in the Cala report of uncollected rent, how much of that is actually recoverable? And following on from the point about Colmendy, going forward, how are we going to ensure there aren't other leaseholders who are allowed to let our assets fall into disrepair or are getting away with not having their rent reviews to a higher level when we have that opportunity?
Rent levels, do you want to answer that one now? Do you know the answer to that one?
Sorry, just to say, I mean, some of that was answered at the last, at the last select committee meeting. But just to, just quickly repeat that, Lee, without going over all ground, if you don't mind.
Chair, yeah, he does, obviously, as we touched on, the last select committee, it is linked to the current coronavirus legislation that's in place till the thirty-first of March 2022. So we obviously can look at payment plans, obviously discussing with tenants, but in terms of the remedy of, for non-payment of rent serving forfeiture, the current legislation prevents us doing that.
One was being on top of our rents, our rent reviews and any dilapidations and whether actually leases are for repairing leases or not. And again, all of that work is being done and stitched together as we speak. We've got some new staff in, but we really need a lot more staff. We've got some places there, we haven't been able to attract people yet and we're trying every which way to get people in, otherwise the pressure on our staff is extreme, but also the pressure on us as a council needing to get that money in. We need it in and we need really full proper rent reviews, which we're going through, but we could do with those vacancies being filled as quickly as possible, really take some of the pressure off Lee, he might go to sleep at night then. So okay councillor MacInneson, the time being, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Yeah, councillor Conne.
God, it's been that long. Thank you Jane for the report. I was just wondering if you've got an update on the procurement strategy and also for the information that's going to be shared after the meeting for one-stop shops? Does that include data around the levels of usage, around the preferred contact method and also have we seen an increase or decrease of contact from residents?
Procurement strategy?
So procurement strategy, that's in the process at the moment. The key thing is that we, if you remember going back to September sixteen was the last time it was, it was put together. And within that, we want a definition of good business. That's nearly complete now, it'll be complete over the next few days and that goes in as part of the procurement strategy. It's part of our community wealth building commitment as well. So that will show that the impact that we're having on the ground in the city and then beyond, first of all on the city, in terms of the contracts that we do, the procurement method and making sure that we have enough businesses in the city that are positively impacted by our strategy and it is proper wealth building within the city, rather than endlessly going outside. Where obviously we won't, where there aren't the businesses within the city to be able to respond, then we're very aware of that as we go through that process and filter it. And either then we respond by saying this is a gap in the market or we build up stronger relationships with those just outside of the city. In terms of the one-stop, I'm sorry, just to say as well that previously some of the procurement, the procurement team, there were, in terms of regeneration, not everything came through the same routes they are now. So there's a really clear route through using our procurement team, but we need to make sure that that procurement strategy is out there. It's nearly done. On the one-stop shop, yeah, so what we're doing is we're tracking, obviously for us to start off, we're quite late in the process in terms of reopening the shops, but we know some of the feedback, which is why I wanted it to come today, the feedback from people coming through from the residents saying how they're finding it. Alison's team asked those questions and people are happy to respond to that. And then we want to analyse that to see exactly what are the preferred methods. So as people are going in, if they aren't used to using IT equipment, they are offered that support. If they want to continue to use, if they want us to continue as the staff, as the council, to do that IT usage for them, that's still on offer. But it means that people have a choice then to learn how to do things. They can come in, they can use it and they can go out or they, or they get quite tight support around them. So I apologise for that not coming through, but yeah.
Yeah.
Can I just ask then Jane, is the time scales attached for the introduction of a procurement strategy? And then just in terms of the one-stop usage, would we be able, our future committees to have a report that details the usage and whether there has been a decline or whether we have had a shift where people are becoming a little bit more digital?
Certainly, and it's really important we track that through, otherwise the whole point of having those one-stop shops open or are there enough of them is how, is what the committee needs to.
Unfortunately, due to technical issues, it was unable to be fully opened and attached. So within the limits of what our system was able to do, we have included that information. But again, I will work with the deputy mayor to present that in a usable format for your benefit and circuit it at the earliest opportunity in the coming days. And thank you for your patience.
Okay, and then that will be publicly available then through the committee, on the committee site? Okay. Are there any other, any other questions on cabinet members' report? Okay, I've got one question, which relates to the capital asset management and it's something raised in the chair's conference a couple of weeks ago with Lee about the, we had, we came up with an offer to sell residential leases, freeholds, nine hundred ninety-nine year lease, year lease, that were leased for nine hundred and ninety-nine years for £1,000 each. I think there were, am I right, 10,000 of those? Yeah. So obviously we've got a, we've also got, which is a windfall basically to the council, because we're not collecting income from those leases. But we have a number of leases that are ninety-nine years and below as well, which at the moment, if people apply, residents apply, they, they're charged what's considered to be the market value for the freehold and they can be, I mean, I know for example in my ward, they might, I've had an example where they've been asked for thirty, thirty, thirty-five thousand pounds, even though the house is worth, I don't know, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. But obviously we've got a number of those leases and obviously we had a conversation about whether we can get into a position where we could sell those leases, because obviously that is a win for. And only you're going to say something verbally about that.
Chair, yeah, just a clarification, the nine hundred and ninety-nine year ones are residential ground rents as opposed to leases, but we have approximately 750 houses in the city where the council owns the freehold of residential properties and the homeowner. Is likely to be a higher cost to the tenant, whereas if the lease has a number of years left on it, it actually then is cheaper for the tenant to acquire it. So an example, if there was seventy-five years remaining, obviously that would be cheaper for the tenant to acquire than one that had twenty years remaining.
Okay, but I mean, I think the reason for raising it obviously is that, given, I know it's a windfall, but given that it's a windfall, it's, you know, there's this potential, because those leases are worth more at a discounted rate than the nine hundred and ninety-nine year leases. Am I right in saying that they don't, we don't charge ground rents for those?
No, it's, yeah, no, it's rent payable on a monthly basis.
Okay. But it just seems as an option, whether that's something that you would want to consider?
Yeah, should we, should we come back to you about that? I've written it down, Chair, so I'll take that away and come back to you. So as a suggestion, what you're saying, yeah, and it'll be in a minute, so we can track that through. Thank you.
Okay, are there any, any further questions? Okay, all right, thank you for, thanks for your report. If we move on to, into item six, Leanne, you're going to, this, Leanne's first presentation to select committee. So we'll, we'll, we, we love information that we can get to use for us to sort of consider things going forward. So don't be nervous, enjoy the opportunity and it'd be great to get the information around, around the capital board and how it's, how it's going to function going forward. And perhaps it's worth giving a bit, obviously there'll be a little bit of background to that.
Thank you. Yeah, so I've put together a short presentation, so the purpose of that is to outline the terms of reference, given that the board's been newly formed this financial year and also to provide an update on where we are with the capital. And also to provide an update on where we are with the capital prioritisation process. So we can just move to the first slide. So the main purposes identified within the slide is to develop the overall capital strategy and the annual programme in accordance with the requirements of the City and Recovery Plan. But ultimately, to also provide an informed recommendation to senior management team, Cabinet and full council on future investment opportunities. We commission and assess business cases received from directors that aim to achieve the outcomes within the City and Recovery Plan. We need to determine the level of risk that we need to retain and take into consideration financial, legal and commercial aspects. We also need to continuously assess, monitor and review the capital programme to ensure that things are on target, projects are achieving what they've said that they were going to, for example, budgets and timelines. And to also complete appropriate gateways and post-completion reviews. We also work closely with the Corporate Property Board on recommendations such as the Capital Receipts Programme to make sure we've got that strategic alignment across the different services. We can move on to the next slide. So it's important to note here that the capital board are not a decision-making body. The purpose of the board is to be able to provide an informed recommendation, as I've previously discussed, to help Cabinet and full council make the right decisions on what future opportunities we've got when it comes to investments. So in order to do that, we've implemented a three-stage iterative process. And it consists of inviting directors to pull forwards initially, called bids on a page, very high level. But we will encourage new and innovative ideas on how we can achieve the outcomes within the strategic plans. What will happen at that stage is that each of the bids will be reviewed and assessed, quality assured by a bit of a mouthful, so bear with me. It's the Capital Gateway Project Appraisal subgroup, so CGPAG going forward. So we will assess these bids individually, taking into consideration risk and also importance. So say, for example, a strategic alignment with the strategic plans. What's the impact on people, place, environment, things like that? And obviously, associated risks could include reputational risk, financial investment, whether we've got any guaranteed funding. So all of that's taken into consideration. And then at the end of that, there will be a recommendation put forward to the capital board by CGPAG. At which point, we will identify a prioritisation of projects to take forward to stage two. So when you reach the stage two, it will be, we will help the directors develop the outlined business cases into more detail where we will find out the financial implications of that, assess the risks and benefits associated with that. Look at the best value, how that will have achieved alongside non-tangible benefits like social value as well. So after the stage two, that's when, again, there will be a stage two opinion that will be taken forward to the capital board. And at the end of that, the capital board will provide a recommendation to senior management team, cabinet and full council so that they can make the appropriate recommendations with regards to any new investments going forward. Upon approval from our full council, the projects will then be subject to a full business case to make sure that we go, before anything commences, we make sure that any costs come out as what they should be. So obviously, engagement procurement into detail. And then it also works as like a gateway then before we start the projects in detail. Throughout that three-stage process, there will be engagements from commissioners where appropriate. And also during stage two, you should expect to have engagements with any local ward members or cabinet members for any projects that are applicable for your area.
We can move on to the next slide.
So as discussed on stage one, it's not just about looking at the new asks as well. As part of this process, we're continuously reviewing the existing capital programme that we've got in place. Making sure that it's still achieving the priorities of the strategic plans. And the board can confirm that the current programme still remains affordable. But we've had to take into consideration the financial implications associated to that and the impact on revenue. As a result of that, there's been affordability measure that has been put in place and it's been set at eleven per cent of the net council's revenue stream. Meaning that cumulative borrowing costs shouldn't exceed around fifty-seven million per annum. Now, to put it into context, the first stage of this year's capital board review, we received over seventy bids. Now, if we didn't have that prioritisation process in place and then progress went through, the eleven per cent would have by far been exceeded. We would have had no scope for any future projects over the next few years. And it was also resulting us having to find additional revenue savings to add to the existing financial pressures that we've already got. So if the council wants to continue borrowing into the future, this process is critical, really, to make sure that the key projects are going forwards, the ones that are bringing us the most benefits, that are achieving the social value, the best value. And as I say, it's just supporting that decision to take for the full council. So where are we up to with the capital prioritisation process? So taking all that into consideration and given the risk levels that we need to take into fact, we've ended up setting a forty million pounds USB limit for supportive borrowing. And that's for any new asks that we take forward. Current progress with regards to where we are, Capital Gateway Project Appraisal Group are working throughout stage two now. So we've whittled down to a number of key projects that we feel like need to be considered, really developed into them in-depth business cases. We have ten projects that fit within the forty million pounds affordability limit. But we've also identified four other key projects that sit outside that, what we thought we need to still take forward to assess the risks associated to that. So upon completion of this quality assurance, we'll be taking that opinion forward to capital board. And capital board will be able to put that opinion, the recommendation forward for consideration by cabinet and full council. So the next slide is just giving a position on where we were as at quarter one. So it's showing what the financial, the five-year capital programme was, split against service areas, and shows also how that's funded across the period. Now, on the agenda today, we've also got the cabinet, the capital monitor. So that goes into the next level of detail, if you'd like to see what specific schemes we've got in our capital programme. And finally, I knew that, sorry, Mike, I knew that there was a specific query about the housing and neighbourhood and what investment we've currently got towards that. So we've just put together a slide of things that we've already got in place, things that we're considering, and some, any new opportunities. So we've got the Denford Road, that's already included in the capital programme. And we're working with Lovell in a partnership to develop a hundred and five homes. Part of them homes have already been agreed that they will be onwards disposed to Riverside Housing as they own part of that site. We've got the Festival Gardens remediation and development works, which will enable developers to then go on and provide approximately, I think there's planning permission for fifteen hundred new homes. And also some mixed use of sites as well, so we've got a community and a commercial aspect. We've got the Green Homes grant funding, which will help energy finishing homes of low-income households, helping reduce the fuel poverty that's on the agenda. Another active scheme is just using Anfield Village Environment Improvement as an example. When we said about, it's not just about the new asks that we're currently reviewing, we're also continuously reviewing the capital programme as it is. Anfield's was one of the ones that we brought back in to review. There's been some slight change in scope, but without a doubt, this is going to be a success story. There's going to be a lot of positives that come onto the investment that's going to be put into the Anfield area. And it just gives that reassurance that the capital programmes we've progressed through is still relevant to the strategic plans and the outcomes that we need to achieve. There's also some funds and that's being allocated to Stonebridge Cross. And that's to undertake any pre-development work and master planning for the site. So we can test the feasibility on how that will go coming forward. That's the end of the presentation, thank you.
Thank you. Just before we go into questions, it's worth, I'd just draw your attention to the capital monitor as well, which is basically a monthly update on the capital programme. And the, so one of the tables, which is probably worth looking at, is on page thirty-two, which is the planned capital investment over the next five years. So obviously, it starts at two hundred and thirty-eight million this year and ends up at two point three million in twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. But so just, just to sort of factor into discussions, any councillor Mitchell?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for your report and welcome, and I promise you I'll be very, very nice. One of the issues you raised regarding pending sites was Stonebridge Cross. I raised this at the Regeneration slash Housing Select Committee last week. Because a similar line and a similar paragraph came to that meeting. I have been on committees, Stonebridge Cross, Stephen groups, for, it's literally fifteen years. The original one was under the previous administration. I genuinely do not know how many plans and master plans there's been, I've lost track. It's at least six. It was originally, the site was cleared and the site had housing and two schools to provide the terminus for the tram line that was going to run up there. Then it was going to be the city, the country's largest Tesco's. Then there was going to be five hundred new McLean's homes. Then we had a master plan which included John Bosco moving to that site. The point I'm making is there has been research done to death. The site has plans coming out of every cupboard that you can find in Regen. And I've directly asked the director of regeneration to just find the plans, we don't need site work. Every plan that you want to come up with has already been done. They're there. Can we please try and bring a proposal, joined-up proposal, which includes partners on the ground? And we've been talking about this literally for fifteen years. And I'm just kind of saying, please, can we work towards something tangible? Because there's lots tangible already done. And that includes partners such as Cobalt and Taurus and All Valley. It's huge, the work that's already been done. So just, please, and if you haven't got copies of them, I promise you, I've got copies of every single email and every single plan. So I've just an offer to support you, and that's supported by all the local councillors. Thank you, Chair.
We've got councillor Crofts, is it full on the same point? To respond to that then, come back to you, is that all right?
I was going to say, I feel your pain, councillor Mitchell, having had, yeah, having had so many plans and project plans done in the Everton Ward. We used to measure, well, there was, there was something going on around our community where we just basically had a laugh because it was, it was blocks of plans. The key thing about this, though, is this is going to be done very carefully, as you know. You've got the allocation for undertaking pre-development work now. So if anything's shifted, anything's changed, we've got, as you know from before, when I mentioned the audit reports, some of that information has got to be collected and put in one place. So it's better, I think, to go forward very carefully now, getting this work done so we can see exactly what's there and then move on, rather than pull out reports from previously when they might be five years out of date, ten years out of date, whatever. So I would, I would, yeah, I would say I feel your pain. I know what it's like, having waited for twenty-five years to get a supermarket onto Great Home Street. We're not going to wait that long. But Stonebridge Cross obviously needs detailed work done to test that out before it happens. It's got to be, it's got to be, otherwise, you know, we could almost be on shifting ground and now we're going to go backwards and not forwards.
Mike, so do you want to come back to that?
Yeah, thank the cabinet member and I appreciate your experience on this and that's not a problem. And that's offering our support, and that includes councillor Lovell and councillor Sung and any other local councillors. The point I'm making is a lot of the reports that we possibly may be commissioning, although I don't know, we might already have, because we've spent a lot of money. By my estimate, circa five million pounds on reports on the site. And it's just to try and help, help things, but absolutely happy to support and, what were you saying?
Just to add a bit of, to our test your patience, councillor Croft, but I was going to say that the survey work being conducted at the moment is, is obviously we're spending it, but it's a grant. Am I thinking I'm right in saying that?
It's a grant from the LCC.
From the city region, yeah.
Sorry, from the city region, yeah, yeah. And if that, if that shows what we needed to show, then we're on solid ground, if you don't mind, to move, yeah, to move forward. We need that and it's an LCC grant, which is really helpful to us as well.
But the issue is, I think, which is something that should be picked up probably in another select committee, but the issue is there isn't, there isn't one penny for building of housing for the council on that site as it stands at the moment. I think that's probably something that you'd worth noting.
So just go back to the presentation before. Again, all of this comes onto the commissioners, because it was a bit of a mess to put it politely before then. We've getting the capital boards into place, needed time, getting all of those details in place, getting the frameworks right. So yes, it's taken a lot of time, but I would hope that now we've got everything in place and we've got a very clear, transparent and accountable system that you guys can, sorry, you members of the select committee can double-check as well. And obviously, the ward councillors would be, you know, in the loop on that. It's your ward and it's you represent the community who voted you in. So it's vital that the residents there are on top of this as well, so they can see what's been happening and what is happening.
Chair, I absolutely respect and understand about the money, but as you're aware, because you've been round some of the tables on some of these conversations, we do have partners with money, with development money. It isn't necessarily LCC's issue, it's not a shortage of money. Both Cobalt and Taurus have offered money. So I think there is an opportunity to bring that external funding to the table, should we wish. That I will bang on and bang on is about, we have fifty-seven acres on the edge of the city that has remained a wasteland for this length of time. And in the spirit of positivity, absolute positivity, you know, we want to take this opportunity, working with the commissioners to find a way forward to be able to develop the site.
The commissioners will oversee what we're doing, that they're checking it, they're not, they're not making, they double-check it. What we're doing is our workings out, if you like. But it also shows councillor Mitchell, given the numbers of housing, that there's a projective of that site. The master planning has got to be right, because we've got to have the right, if we're going to build or however they are built, if that, if that number of houses is going to go on that site, there has to be the right infrastructure in that area. You know, if we remember years and years ago, when I wasn't in Liverpool in the sixties, but came in the mid-seventies, you know, Kirby, et cetera, before there was any even infrastructure out there, what we must make sure is that it all ties in together, rather than it's just houses.
Councillor Croft?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you for getting to me. I had three questions, I think I still remember them. Thank you for the presentation and welcome, you did ever so well. First question is in respect of the composition of the capital committee, the later, or capital board, rather. The later paper, the next paper on the agenda says that it's chaired by the chief executive, but it doesn't refer to who else serves on this body, recognising, of course, it's only there to make recommendations to cabinet and to council. Second question is in respect of the process that the board went through in calculating the eleven per cent ceiling. What is it that makes that the magic number? Why not twelve? Why not ten? What was the process that you went through in deducing that that was the right level? And then thirdly, connected to that, what is the headroom that that provides in the event of emergent things occurring? Obviously, if there were to be a sudden opportunity or a sudden calamity, if councillor Mitchell is able to put together a package that can finally bring Stonebridge cost to fruition after all this time, there must be a mechanism by which additional funding can be found. And I wonder what the headroom is beyond that eleven per cent?
Can I just add, in addition to that, just how, over what period of time that eleven per cent is calculated relevant for? So if, for example, it would be possible to, if we went to twelve per cent, for example, next year, but as a result of the investment, it would subsequently come down to ten per cent in three or four years' time? Is that, you know, is that part of the calculation in addition to what you're saying?
Can I take your three questions? Members on the board, it's the chief exec, myself, the director of regeneration, the director of children's, the chair of the capital PAG group, the project assessment group, which that role is currently empty at the moment, that sit on there. Leanne and Peter, and then some of the other members of the finance team are on there as well to give advice and support. And individual officers will come and talk about their projects and present their projects to the board as well as... and present their projects to the board as well as uh tracking some of the fa- the uh capital funding that comes in. So section one or six monies have started to be tracked as well as capital receipts. But as councillor Corbett uh said, it it's only met, I think we're on our fourth meeting. So uh we're getting into a bit of a rhythm still. And we're due to report back to cabinet on the initial findings at a leadership team meeting on the eighth of October uh alongside the revenue uh posit- the the council's revenue position for the next five years. So we can take it all together as a collective view of the financial position. In terms of the eleven percent, the process for calculating that and some of that is uh my ad- was my advice to council. Uh, for that being an appropriate prudent and affordable level of debt for the council. The assessment was based on the size of the revenue stream that we had. And we looked at the other core cities uh and established a median around the core cities. Uh, and also in discussions with the treasury management advisors about the future prospects for interest and inflation rates. Uh, all of those factors were assessed to come back to the eleven percent. Uh, we will assess it each financial year uh based on those uh economic forecasts. So the eleven percent was set for this financial year. The headroom at the moment is the difference between the forty million pound, which if we invest an extra forty million, causes no further revenue implications for us. So there are no further financial uh pressures on the revenue budget of investing forty million of capital. We can afford to do that. If we go up to the fifty three million, that will cause a revenue pressure for us. But that does give us the uh thirty million pound of headroom should we need it. Uh, we do also, I will uh remind committee. We do also have the general fund balance of twenty million, which is is there for emergencies and events that uh that you've described that we can call on if we need to. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah. Councillor Meekins.
Thank you, Chair. Certainly welcome the establishment of this capital board. It's uh a massive leap forward from the previous, what I would have to call nebulous situation of um what often appeared to be um the mayor coming up with proposals that he quite fancied and then officers trying to come up with the justification for that. Um.
I think you should temper.
I'll leave it at that po- that point. The economist in me, however, always looks at uh at any of these sort of things and asks about the opportunity cost uh of each investment and pleased to hear that um uh there seems to be an element of that being taken into account. So for instance, uh investing in a shopping centre or a sports car manufacturer, as we've done in the past, might stack up on paper, but it does come at the expense of an alternative scheme that might provide a better rate of return or be less risky or provide greater community benefit. So I'm interested in knowing how the 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 board is actually going to consider that balance. Is there going to be a sort of scoring system or or what?
Thank you.
Who who's the, who wants to take that? Mel, okay.
Thank you. Uh, at the mo- what you what you're describing there was our commercial investment strategy that came a couple of years ago to council. As you'll be aware, that was put on hold and has been removed from the capital programme as a result uh to the changes to what we're allowed to borrow from PWLB now. So the kind of investment you're talking about would only be uh will only be done for regeneration purposes now and would be within the city. Uh, we establish return on investment based on each individual project that comes forward. Uh, because we assess the risk as well that goes along with that project. So we don't have a hard and fast rate of return on investment that a a project needs to establish. Because we are, we are focusing on risk at the same time. And we were, one of the criteria for assessing all the projects is looking at it from the outcomes that are in the city plan and whether that investment will help to achieve those outcomes as well as improving the financial sustainability of the council.
Are there any other questions, observations? On that, I I was gonna ask whether the whether some of the recent decisions around borrowing went to the capital board, so that the the highways investment, for example, and the lobo loans, was they, were they considered by uh the capital board?
Uh, the lobo loans weren't considered by the capital board because that's part of the uh treasury management. Uh, so that was taken to management team uh and then through to cabinet. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't part of the capital board's remit. Uh, the highways investment, the additional monies that uh were in the July report, that was considered at capital board.
Um, okay, and then I I just, I think it's just worth, um, just to have conversations about the, you know, what on council investment in in housing, for example, I know it's the mayor, one of the mayor's manifesto pledges, but can you just describe how the housing, borrowing for housing differs from the borrowing from the general fund?
Uh, I can. Uh, so borrowing for housing uh is paid for if you have, uh if you have a housing revenue account, that is a ring fenced account. Whilst it sits within the general fund, it is entirely ring fenced and should be self sustaining. Uh, so when you borrow for the housing revenue account, he each of those individual loans are identified and set aside as housing revenue account loans. Uh, the housing revenue account pays for the interest costs of that. Where you do have some discretion around the HRA is setting aside what we call minimum revenue provision. Uh, and that is, if you think of your mortgage, that's the principal element of your mortgage. So there there are some discretions for the council about how much you set aside each year for that. However, what you do have to do as part of the uh HRA is to set aside major repos allowance, which is the equivalent of depreciation on those houses every year. Uh, and that is an actual charge to the bottom line. Uh, so when it comes to assessing how much you can borrow, it all depends on the level of rent you've got because it does have to be affordable. You set a minimum balance for the HRA every year similar to you do as you do for the general fund balance. Uh, but it is ring fenced and the borrowing is ring fenced into the HRA.
Would we be right in in saying that the that the eleven percent fiscal rule, if you like, that we're applying to our borrowing and the general fund, however that is implemented, is not the uh is not the same as it is for borrowing in the housing revenue account?
We would have to assess that. If we had a housing revenue account, we would need to assess that separately to the eleven percent we've got. The eleven percent relates to uh the general fund borrowing, not to the housing, any housing revenue account, but at the moment, we don't have a housing revenue account.
Okay, there any further further questions?
Chair, can I just ask then, um, are we gonna get future reports on the capital board? Um, in terms of what decisions have been made and come being agreed from cabinet?
Uh, they will come through cabinet anywhere because uh it isn't a decision making body. It needs to recommend anything to cabinet. So all those reports will go through cabinet. So yes, you you can scrutinize those as they come through.
But specifically, would they be coming to this committee as well? So obviously, the pathway is recommendations made by the board through to cabinet. Cabinet will either approve or object. And then would we get as a committee, get the opportunity to see what's been agreed as part of our um quarterly reports or update reports?
So.
I mean, if 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 you would, if you, well, there's obviously several mechanisms, isn't there? One is that something goes to the cabinet and there's a chance to call that in. Another is that you can actually put it on as 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 an item on the agenda, so you track the the cabinet um decisions as they come through. Um, obviously, some of them, if they're if they're crucial ones, will need to go through to full council, I would think Mel as well, depending on uh depending on the level of of the of the funds. But yeah, if I was in your position, I'd ask exactly the same question. Please, can we have these coming through so we can at least see them? It's it depends whether you want to scrutinize them or whether you want to call them in and challenge them, come up with different recommendations. They come back into cabinet then. So so that that's for you to have a think. And but yes, if I was in your position, I would be asking for them to go on through as well.
So, okay, okay, just my, so one final question. So on the table on page thirty two um with the projected uh capital investment. So of course, that it's not just uh based on on borrowing, that can also be capital receipts. So we could be selling some of our assets to realize some of that that money. But is that, the fact that it tapers off so dramatically, is that reflective of the eleven percent? Or is that to create headroom for additional borrowing, for example, going forward?
Uh, there are a number of reasons for it tapering down to two point three uh million. Some of that is we haven't established the programme yet for twenty twenty five, twenty six. Uh, quite a a lot of it is because external grants uh haven't been assumed in the latter years of the capital programme budget. Uh, and at the moment, the team are going through an exercise of reprofiling some of the spend across the five years as well as revising the medium term financial strategy. And along with that, the capital strategy to assess what that capital programme will look like over the five years. It doesn't relate to you uh to unsupported borrowing at the moment.
Okay.
Whereas, I mean, what what's really useful here is that you can see how this fits with the city plan because it's it's carefully um recorded in there, but also we're putting together our council plan as part of the city plan. And the difficulty for us, as you know, will be trying to do a medium term financial plan when we're in the dark. And so doing the one year and then forward, looking forward from there. So we've just got to be really careful that we have that balance rate between investing in our city and our families and our communities, but making sure that we don't tip over to put too much of pressure on on the revenue side of that capital, which then puts even more pressure on our on our revenue costs. And 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 that that's where actually, if I was you, I would I would be looking at that, is it coming through and asking those sorts of questions?
Okay, thank you. So the five, one sort of final question, because we've made, we've mentioned, we've raised the commissioner, the issue of the commissioners and obviously they're not still on the agenda, but we did ask, um, you know, the 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 committee being formed of of decisions or process where commissioners are pushing back on particular particular projects with the re- with what the impact of that has been and the reason why. So just wondering with any of these uh any of the schemes within the capital programme that have been uh discussed, whether that has, that's been the case?
Uh, not so far. Uh, they've discussed with those individual reports, uh particularly in Lee's area around property asset management. And there has been some additional information added to reports, but there has been nothing pushed back yet or rejected.
It might be worth saying, Chair, that there's a there's a very high level of due diligence going on inside the council. And obviously, that that was one of the areas of the council uh workings that um the Cala report uh was concerned about. And so our hope is, as as cabinet members and and the mayor, to make sure that we come to the right conclusion at the right time. The commissioners don't stop and start us. We need to have everything in place which we have in terms of the processes, which is exactly why we needed that capital board there. That process is shown. So the commissioners oversee to make sure it's okay. But we've made sure it's okay already, if you get me. So it's not a sort of have a look at that and then move on or stop us or start us. Otherwise, we'll just get jammed up in the whole system.
Okay, I mean, I'm uh I'm hearing it's a bit more pushback than that, but but we'll um we'll monitor that as we see as we go as we go forward. The um, are there any other questions on on that uh item? Okay, Leanne, thank you very much for your report. Look forward to future ones. Um, if you move on to um item number seven, and the reason for the reason for asking for for this, again, because it's budget related, is just how the the collection of business rates um has an impact on our council revenue and our council income. Um, and therefore how that might shape some of the decisions that that the council will take in terms of uh investment to generate business rates, to support the uh increase in income and how that can be used. So that was the reason for uh having this on the the agenda today. Who's presenting this one? Okay.
Thank you, Chair.
If you keep it to ten, fifteen minutes maximum, please.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Take it quick.
It's it's you get more from questions actually than. I like it anyway.
Uh, thanks very much. It's just a brief presentation on the collection calculation and a very brief uh note, uh message on the retention scheme at the end of this as well. This rate tax base is the calculation that we use to generate, that generates our income. This is not the rates payable. This is actually the ratable value which is assigned to each property within the city. Uh, that rateable value is assigned by the valuation office agency, not by the city council. That's important to note. We split this into two broad categories, commercialized and retail, which you can see was seventeen thousand nine hundred eighty three properties. And industrial, educational, utility and public services at two six one three. The total is twenty thousand five hundred ninety six and with a total ratable value of just over five hundred thirty three million. This is a volatile figure, which I'll briefly describe a bit later, the reasons why there's some volatility in that. Just on the collection of visitor traits and income for twenty twenty one, we received one hundred twenty three million pounds in retail discount and six hundred forty few thousand in nursery discount directly from the government. This was part of the government's Covid response. Uh, the current value of retail discount received for the current financial year for twenty twenty one is seventy one million and additional five hundred thousand for the nursery discount. Uh, current year debit includes those that have been billed from the first of July twenty twenty one for the remainder of the financial year and receiving retail and hospitality discount of only sixty six percent. The government made a decision for this year that they will reduce the retail discount due to the open up of the economy from the hundred percent granted previous year to sixty six percent for this year. The current collection rate is thirty two point six percent as at the thirty first of July, which is equivalent to the previous year's figure when we received the discounts from the government at a higher level. Of the total balance for twenty twenty one, which is ninety nine point four five million, we know that sixty five percent of that debt, we have received a payment to the but with the value outstanding of sixty four point five million. And again, that is at the first of July twenty twenty one. Collectible business rates and income, the total collection as of the thirty first again uh of July is forty eight million compared with thirty four million for the same period in previous year. So basically, we've seen about a fourteen million pound increase in collectible income from business rates. Accounts which receive the six discount for retail hospitality leisure have been billed as stated from July twenty one for the balance outstanding. And as of the time when we actually produced this presentation, they hadn't been uh uh billed for their first instalment. The first instalment was due in August and that will carry up to the thirty first of March. The amount raised for the remainder of the debt outstanding in this category was thirty three million pounds. Just briefly stating there, the total amount outstanding uh for pre- Just briefly stating there, the total amount outstanding for previous years, it was thirty three million. Current year balance is ninety nine million, give a total at this moment, a total collective balance of one hundred thirty three million. Just very quickly through this on the business rate retention and recap. Since twenty thirteen, local authorities have been allowed to retain up to fifty per cent of the previous scheme. There's not a scheme under now, which I'll mention very quickly. From twenty seventeen eighteen, the Liverpool City Region, amongst others, is piloting the one hundred per cent business rate retention scheme. Local authorities also receive a top up grant from the government in the business rate baseline. And if that is less than the baseline funding level, a tariff or pay, a tariff, it is more. I'll show on the next slide that there is a tariff and a top up between the two schemes. The baseline amounts were set quite some time ago, twenty fourteen, and have not been reassessed since. They are government calculations based on historic levels of business rate income and on a relatively needs assessment at a point in time, at this time, it was twenty twelve. Just a quick graph to show how the tariff and top up work. Basically, if your baseline is, your baseline income is greater than the baseline funding level set by the government, you'll be subject to a tariff. If it is reverse, as you see in authority B, you'll get a top up from the government and that top up will be your baseline figure. On the previous scheme, on the fifty per cent business rate, central city council retained forty nine per cent of any other business rates collected. With forty percent going to the fire authority of fifty percent paid to the national pool. Effectively, forty nine per cent of any gains or losses were borne by the council. The council also received a top up because the total government estimated retained income from business rates was deemed to be less than its baseline funding level. Some authorities pay a tariff, and I explained the previous graph, because their estimated retained income was more than the baseline figure. Liverpool obviously receives a top up. Liverpool authorities also received revenue support grant previously, plus other grants partially funded from the fifty per cent pooled rates paid to the government. On the scheme that were occurring, on the pilot scheme, which would be in since twenty seventeen eighteen, local is on the one hundred per cent pilot scheme, Liverpool City Council retains ninety nine per cent of the business rates with forty percent to the fire authority and no contribution to the national pool. Effectively, ninety nine per cent of any gains or losses will be borne by the council, subject to the no detriment, which I'll just go on to very briefly next, clause operating Jordan, the pilot. The council also receives a top up because the total government estimated retained income from the business rates, as previously stated in the graph, even at ninety nine, still need to be less than the baseline funding level. The council no longer receives revenue support grants at this, as this has been rolled into the one hundred per cent business rate retention scheme. Approved better care funding has also been rolled into business rate retention scheme. Next slide nine. As just previously stated, no detriment, what this basically means is that as you move from the fifty per cent retention scheme to the one hundred per cent retention scheme, you will not suffer detriment between those two schemes. One of the conditions of participating councils, while the one hundred per cent pilot scheme, is that no authority will be worse off than they were previously, other than the fifty per cent retention scheme. The government will intervene to make good any losses occurred by the pilot authorities. The government will also make a no detriment payment if there are insufficient gains across the pilot authorities to make good any losses occurred by any individual authorities. The no detriment agreement scheme only exists for the duration of the pilot scheme. A new business rate retention scheme possibly muted that about seventy five per cent retention has been in development for a number of years, but at this moment in time, we have no information from the government if that will be deployed. Just very quickly on the advantages of the one hundred per cent pilot scheme. No authority should be worse off, as previously stated, under the fifty per cent scheme. Authorities can gain by retaining ninety per cent of any business rate surplus compared to only forty nine per cent previously. In effect, you can win on the scheme, but you can't really lose. Ability to influence the pilot shape of any new scheme because we are in the pilot and we will report back to the government on that pilot and the success. Just very briefly on the safety net. The business rate retention scheme also includes a safety net mechanism whereby councils are compensated if their business rate income drops below, say, the threshold of normally ninety two point five per cent as baseline funding, or if you pass the pilot scheme, ninety seven per cent. This effectively is a floor which business rate income is guaranteed not to fall. With twenty twenty one, Liverpool would have to lose seven point nine million pounds before the safety net would come into operation. The safety net provides some assurance that any increased losses will be capped at a certain level, but councils can still experience losses in this. If we go to lose three per cent, we would still be not, the safety net would not be triggered. It only triggered above the three per cent figure. Concerns going forward, no detriment agreements only last for the duration of the pilot scheme, as I've just stated. Business rate income is volatile due to economic factors, also due to impacted appeals, which I'll briefly mention. Increased risk, increased need for adequate reserves, less funding available to spend on services potentially. How sustainable are business rates in the longer term, given the structural economic changes, particularly in the residential sector? Spending pressures may increase faster than business rate growth, but not to be reflected until any reset. Importantly, I just want to go through some challenges to collection. Very important, what is influencing collection is obviously the value and amount of valuation office appeals. The actual increase in business properties since August twenty twenty is fifty four, which would normally would want to see an increase in the actual amount collectible. However, there has been an eight point nine million reduction in the actual overall rates of value in the city due to appeals. This is equivalent to four point four million pound reduction in net cash terms. Non payers, there is currently thirty three point five million for current year on accounts with no payment. A total of fourteen point six million, if they say, is for customers who have received a retail discount. These counts will be subject to recovery in future, but those who have received a retail discount, they still have a period of time to meet their instalments. Irreparable debt is always one that we look at very carefully. Currently, when we ran this report, there was just half a million pounds had been indebted to irreparable debt. This can mainly due to people maybe deceased or insolvent companies or insolvent individuals. A point as well, that if we do have to take recovery, we are now struggling with court availability. This is a national problem, but it is also very significant for Liverpool. Our present HM Court service and tribunal service cannot provide sufficient courts for the councils to meet the amount of summoners in liability orders that we may have to obtain for those who have not maintained their payments. We are in consultation with the courts on this and we hope to increase the capacity quite shortly. However, I would need to report back further on that. Thank you.
Great, that was within fifteen minutes, that was really comprehensive. Thank you very much, really interesting. Can I throw in two questions? To Meganson.
Thank you, Chair. Report later on gives a very stark illustration of how retail rent levels are collapsing. And clearly, you've had a number of appeals to the valuation tribunal. Are there any medium to long term assessments yet of what the impact will be on rates levels?
Do you want the question again? Do you want to repeat your question?
Just, has there been any assessment on the long term impact of rate levels from the collapse of commercial property values? Well, there's been a collapse in rent levels in the report later on, but that obviously is also going to influence the number of appeals we get to the valuation tribunal calling for lower rate levels.
We make assessments of the level of appeals. So we've got a provision of fifty million in terms of our assessments of the appeals provision. We also make bad debts provisions as well. So we're continuing reviewing that in terms of making correct provisions and bad debt provisions as well.
Do you want to add something to that?
Yeah, we're making assessments all the time around what the level of collection we're going to get. Obviously, some of the, the business rates itself is all a matter of the valuation office to determine for us. But we are making assessments all the time, particularly around when retail premises maybe have a change of use. We're looking at that. But we do do a fairly major exercise just before we come to set the budget. So we can tell you in the statements that come forward what we think the level of business rates will be for the year. And we can give you an estimate around the collection funding income that's going to come in.
Any other questions? Yeah.
I think it might be worse. I had a tutorial on this from your colleague Tony Wells last week. And I think it's fair to say you need a PhD on it to understand it, unless I'm just stupid. But he did it really well, but even so, I need to go back over it again. But what struck me really was how much of this is outside of our control to start with, because it's the valuation office. Also, the relative needs assessment, which hasn't been changed since thirteen fourteen. If that is changed, will that benefit us or not, depending on how the present government looks at our relative needs? They could change that quite dramatically. The no detriment clause is obviously absolutely crucial to us because at the moment, we're okay. We don't get hurt by this because we're in the hundred per cent business rate retention. But once there's a new national scheme in place, the no detriment clause will go. And then suddenly, we are then severely at risk. We carry that risk and that's what's worrying. So it's really useful, the question that you asked, Council Meganson, about how, what do we know? If it suddenly changes and the whole system changes, we need to be aware of how this works. To be honest with you, I think if Labour and government, they'd pull a much better, what anybody would pull a much better system in place than this, but hey, we are where we are.
Can I ask, you said, so is the council no longer in receipt of revenue support grants? Does you say?
That's correct, yeah.
Well, so whatever public funding we get, apart from grant funding, is totally dependent on business rate?
Plus top up grant, we do get a top up grant because our baseline funding assessment is greater than the level of income that the government have assessed we will receive. So we do get top up grant.
And does that mean then that if we are able to generate additional business rates? So for example, the developments of Bradley Mall and the developments around that, which will obviously come with business rates, does that translate automatically into additional income into the council?
Ultimately, yes, it will, subject to there being new business rather than a movement of business from one building to another. It needs to be new because you do get displacement.
So my final question then, is it in our interest as a council to increase the opportunities for business rate through developments in the city, across the city, that will bring in that additional revenue? Because obviously, that also means we might be able to borrow more, to invest ourselves potentially.
Yes, yes, potentially. Being an accountant, I have to caveat, don't I, is that we will be able to retain growth until the government do a reset. And then they will look again at our basic, our baseline funding assessment and the income that's coming in. And they will base it on the current level of business rates. And when they do that reset, if we add growth, then the amount of top up grant will start to reduce.
Okay, thank you.
So I think the RSG is that they rebalance the whole set of figures. So it always lines up, so if it's a hundred per cent retention or it's the old system, no one will lose on that, so we're on a hundred per cent. But it is a good question, Chair, because at the end of the day, how long do we hold that for? And if we benefit, then the top up that we get will decrease.
Mel.
Chair, if you like, in December, when the settlement comes through, we can bring a paper back, which gives you some detail. Because when the next settlement comes out, they will publish the baseline funding assessment for us again. And they will also publish spending power. So if you like, we can take the committee through that information so you can see the way the government are assessing our baseline funding.
Okay, because it seems, we're going to talk about the budget in a minute, and it seems sort of critical. But the only, it's clear that we need to find as much income as we can get as a council to support the services that we want to keep developing. Some of that will come through council investment, some of it will come through private development or from other public investment or third sector investment. But is that then a key, is that part of a key, we talked about the capital board before. So is that one of the priorities within the capital board to increase our business rate base?
It's certainly one of the items that we look at when we're going through each of the capital beds that come forward is the regeneration impact on the city and the additional business rates or the additional council tax that we may be able to generate.
There's a key link there as well, where looking at our asset base, if we can decarbonise our assets, then our revenue costs will come down in terms of our heat, et cetera, that we spend out. So the trick would be to put it into the, to make sure that we don't spend more revenue cost than we need to against our assets, would be to push some capital into there so that those running costs start to come down, which then takes pressure off other areas of the council. So it's a real trying to balance it around and how it all links up together.
Okay, thanks. I mean, I think, obviously, because there's form reason or another, development is stalling in the city and that will restrict the opportunity for the city to develop more income through business rates. It's not just through schemes that have collapsed because there have been police investigations, but I think just generally in terms of the attitude that developers have towards the city, the relationship we have as a council with developers. But clearly, if we need to build our business rate base, then that relationship, including how planning department operates and everything, is quite critical, isn't it?
Key thing, Chair, is that the developers know what we're looking for and they need to see that we know what we're looking for. They understand that and the due diligence is strong enough so that we weed out the ones who would take us for a ride and we get what I would say, good investment into good business, which ends up with good impact on the ground. And we've got to do that right and that will take longer to do. But once that message is out there in terms of what we're actually looking for and how we define good business, it'd be much easier for the developers to then say, right, okay, I understand that and you want us to work like this. And if the due diligence is strong enough, which it is, it's very strong in the city now, then we won't get taken for a ride.
And you talk about due diligence on external developers' projects or our own projects or both?
What I'm saying is the way that the city moves forward, the way that we want the city to move forward as a council as well, doing strategic regeneration frameworks, et cetera, wants developers to understand where we're going with all of that. But they understand that they have to be, what we're looking for is good business. We need to be very careful in terms of how we define that. That relates to the best value that the commissioners are looking for and then that releases it and we start to move.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, observations on that?
Chair, can I just ask a question around the legal recovery? Because on the comments from the presentation, it highlighted around Liverpool courts not having the capacity for us to go down that route. In the report, it states that we have online.
In the report, it states that we have online hearings through Sefton Magistrates. Is this not something that we can explore to other areas, um if Liverpool courts don't have the capacity?
Yeah, it's not, it's not so much that Liverpool courts don't have the capacity for us at the moment. We are not allowed to use the local courts. The only court that's been given to us by the uh the court source is the Sefton Magistrates Court. Now, that may change in the future. I believe there's a backlog in the Liverpool courts, and I believe they're mainly being used now for criminal cases. Once that backlog has been resolved, uh we may well then move back to Liverpool courts and move to a BAU business as usual situation, which would give us additional capacity.
Good, thank you. So we're not able to use any of the magistrates courts, only Sefton. For them, just thinking, obviously, if there is an opportunity to go to work with other magistrate courts and other local authorities, then obviously that will have, you know, a positive impact on a backlog of applicable cases that we need to carry through some legal action and obviously bring in the income.
No, that's actually correct. At the moment now, we can only use Sefton Magistrates Court, but actually, four councils going through the one Sefton Magistrates Court, which is the primary reason why it's online, to be honest. Uh as soon as the backlog is cleared, the local courts will obviously hope to be moving back as soon as possible, which will give us a lot more capacity.
Yeah, so just just one question, sorry. I know we talk, we want good business, obviously. But are you suggesting that becomes part of a planning assessment? Because I don't, I don't, because if if there's a completely independent, independently funded development project that only requires planning permission from the council, are you suggesting that good business becomes a planning consideration?
I wish. And so so at the moment, so if you look at the fracture investment report that we did and went through to regeneration select committee, and they agreed, and then it was agreed at Cabinet, uh whenever that was, a year, two years ago or whenever. And the year and a half, the key thing there was that what we were asking for was that integrated way of working. So we would be able to do placemaking, which was integration with planning, regen and development. That obviously is outside of what the governments are allowing people to do at the moment. If the national and interestingly now, the new uh anyway, Michael Go, who says that he's he's stopping on on moving forward on the planning reform, I would argue that we need planning reform, but we need it, we need it to be much clearer on what we can weed out and what we can stay in, what needs to stay in, in terms of where, okay. You get a bad developer, bad in terms of they're not want, they they don't want to uh actually repay uh their investors, okay? The only power that we have at the moment, if we don't own the land, is through planning. Unless we own a little bit of the land or, the planning system, as you know, is so weak that anything goes through, and then communities are left with stalled sites sitting there, impacting in their communities very, very negatively. And I can think of one um particular site where there's four hundred investors from right across the world that have invested in Liverpool, thinking that they're going to be okay, and they're clearly not. So I would love to see an integrated system where you could check out good business before it gets to that stage, but at the moment, it's not there. That was suggested as part of the, one of the recommendations, recommendation eleven in the faction investment report.
Okay, thanks. Um and if there are no further questions, I'll move on. Um so I suggest the 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 next item is the chief finance officer reports book. I think can we, if we um can consider the budget update within that report? So obviously, that that includes the consideration of the revenue monitor, um which is the current. So that is an update on the current spend department by department within the council and a forecast of whether that will be uh an overspend for the council by the end of March, uh what size that will be or or not. But I think within within, um if we could talk about it within the context of a budget update.
Okay, so there's two reports in the pack, uh the capital programme monitor for quarter one and the revenue monitor for month three. Uh I'll be very brief on the capital one, because we have discussed capital quite a bit tonight. Uh the main aspect of the capital programme is the focus around the Liverpool City Centre connectivity phase one, which at the point this report was written, had a thirteen point uh seven six million pound overspend. That has been, uh sorry, a thirteen point one nine million overspend. That report, there was a report considered on that on the thirtieth of July at uh Cabinet. Uh there is also four point eight million pound slippage on street lighting, uh which will be looked at being re-profiled in future years. And you will see what looks like an eight point four million overspend on disabled facilities grant. However, uh that is awaiting Cabinet approval for the acceptance of the grant and the agreement of spend uh across that scheme. There is a full list of schemes that Leanne referred to attach the annex to. Uh in terms of the revenue monitor, the month three report sets out a nine million pound overspend, just slightly higher than nine million pound. Uh the the main reason for that overspend is around looked after children, uh which is the biggest pressure on the council at the moment. Uh there are also still aspects of uh the Covid nineteen pandemic spend being incurred by the council, the majority of which is covered by additional funding. Uh there is also losses of income as well to the council as a result of the pandemic around car parking uh and also the commercial rents as well that the council receives. Uh so that is the main position for revenue, uh and happy to take any questions on either.
Councilmaker, listen.
Thank you, Chair. Um couple of points. Firstly, both on the capital programme. Firstly, uh on page thirty one, uh refers to relying on receipts of eleven million this year, and only half a million's been raised so far. Is there a risk there of certain assets being sold too cheaply to make this year's target? And how are you assessing which asset sales should perhaps be rescheduled uh to next year or or later in the hope of obtaining a better valuation? And secondly, on the on the city centre connectivity scheme, we have something that started at a cost of forty five million, it's now almost sixty eight million. Again, how do we consider the opportunity cost of these schemes? And just in my ward, for instance, uh there's three dangerous junctions, uh one had a childhood last week. And they've been at the top of the priority list for uh for improvements since two thousand and seventeen, but there's nothing in the budget for it. Uh well, money. I I think there does need to be more more consideration of how we balance the needs of the city centre against the needs of the communities.
Is that a question? I mean, I think, because I, I mean, one of the things I would I would say, and it comes back to the procurement strategy, it would seem absolutely outrageous to me that um a company, an organisation that was commissioned to do a piece of work that costs thirteen million pound more or less, if it wasn't just one contract, that thirty million pound overspend than was commissioned to do, um is that 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 track record doesn't feature in a procurement strategy and a scoring system for a tender going forward? Because that company may, if it wasn't their fault, it's not their fault, but if it if there was some elements of of a of a company that was, that had a contract with the council that was responsible for an overspend, and that wasn't considered in the scoring of a tender going forward, and they then won the next contract, that would seem, that wouldn't seem like best value to me, I would have to say.
I I would agree, Chair, definitely best value or not. Um on your city centre versus um further out issue, um you'll you'll notice that that there's a lot more emphasis now on on neighbourhoods. And and again, we need to get that balance right. Uh what we mustn't do is undermine the city centre, because that's that is a massive engine for um bringing in revenue as well, as we were talking about before, but we cannot and we will not ignore else. And if we uh just focus on the city centre, which has happened. I mean, I I would say, Councilmaker, that the previous administration under yourselves might have possibly done that, but hey, we could argue about that later. And but certainly, the neighbourhoods are crucial. And and the more that we can do coordinated work in the neighbourhoods using community development principles, um the better, because the communities are the ones that know how neighbourhoods work best. Um and that way that they they become much more sustainable, which then links back into the placemaking, which then links back into the planning and how you get all of that. And that's why recommendation eleven in in the fraction investment one was very much around integration of planning, development, regeneration together, so that we could do genuine, long term, sustainable placemaking.
Um are there any, I mean, I I I'm keen for the the bu- the budget, obviously, should be an item on our agenda at every meeting uh going forward. So within, obviously, within the context of of um Mel's report, obviously, is is just where we're up to with with the budget. So I I'm quite happy to take any questions on that.
Chair, I'd like to get an answer to my question about the asset sales targets.
So the?
And the asset sales target.
The question, do you want, Councilmaker, to rephrase it?
It's just in terms of a million raised so far, so how are you going to make that balance to make sure we're not selling things off too cheaply to try and get that target? When some things might be better waiting till next year or the year after?
Uh I'll let Lee come in as well after, if he wants to make any further points, but we we sell for market value. We identify assets that are surplus to our needs. Uh part of the role of the corporate property board, uh which again is a newly established board, uh is to look at any assets that are surplus and to check across all the direct routes. If there is a requirement to return the asset, we will take it to market. But we will do so in a considered manner with the advice from Lee's team and the surveyors in the team about what the best value is and the best route to market as well.
Lee?
Yeah, just to back up, obviously, it's around the market value of the property, but also the kind of market sentiment at at that given state. So obviously, we have a a number of surveyors that have have worked in the city for a a number of years. So it it is, and obviously, as Mel touched on, through the corporate property board, there's going to be a series of asset reviews to actually look at what the future disposal programme may look like.
Okay. Um any, yeah, Councilor Coleman?
One little thing, if you notice, Councilmaker, I think it was the last cabinet report, possibly, there was um a building that we sold uh in Kempton Street area around the Falmouth District. And one of the the considerations there was that we would have had to spend a lot of money doing it up to reach the right EPC levels. So rate rather, so we sold that as part of, if it would have cost us a lot to do up, rather than actually we sell it, we get a good deal for it, it was market rent, market rate, and it fitted with the Falmouth District regeneration. So it was a, it was, and that was one of the ones interesting, that the that the commissioners thought, yeah, that absolutely makes sense. And they realised that quite quickly, and we're happy to pass that on. So it's the arguments that we put for towards the the commissioner's creation.
Uh any, I'll take questions on the budgets, yeah?
Chair, can I just come in, please? Um just in terms of the capital um spend and overspend. So obviously, you know, we're all aware that there's been many challenges over the past couple of years brought about from Covid. And some industries have had occurred costs around supplies and resources and having to change how they operate. Um so understand all those challenges. But can I ask, from a council perspective, if we can have a critical review carried out to assess all the areas with an overspend and any outcomes from that review be presented to a future meeting, please? So that we have the reassurance that we have the right processes in place, we are mitigating any risk um and obviously achieving value for money.
Well, that seems like something we could put on the agenda for our next meeting, doesn't it? Um if you can do that, I I, yeah.
I take exactly what you're saying, because um one of the issues for us is that we need to stay above the silos for as long as possible before we make any budget decisions. But to be able to do the right budget decisions, we've got to do, is it the five, it's five um whys? I will say three, as in, why is that happening? So if you take childrens, for example, you know, numbers have have increased dramatically, why is that? Okay, but why is that? And you go right, right up to the top to see what the real reasons are behind all of this. Look at how we can respond to that and then go into the silos, but you don't go into the silos in terms of budget cuts until we realise what's happening. It may well be that some of that transformation stuff that we're all desperate to do and have been doing, wanting to do for a long time in the council, has to be put through to year two and three, because we haven't got time to do it now. And the budget envelopes that we've got from the government are so tight. So it's totally frustrating, because I'm with you, I would love to do, you know, go right upstream rather than endlessly be be responding downstream where we've got our statutory duties all the time.
Chair, can I suggest that the director of childrens and the director of regen uh and highways come along then to the next meeting to help to explain the situations?
I think just given, obviously, the current climate that we're all operating in, and we know some industries have been hit really hard. Um and it's about us having the right processes in, got the right risk management in, but also our own internal processes, because highlighted in the report, it is evident that our own internal processes, such as when we hold um tiaro meetings, for example, we need to, we need to check that we've got our own house in order to.
I just want to, thanks for that. Just a question, you mentioned, there's been a couple of references to increasing staff, I think in the Pam's department and and just in the context of the budget, I was just wondering whether, and I've asked this before, whether there's a requirement from, as a result of the best value report, and what the commissioners might want to see that um we um add staff to our back office. And if that's the case, what impact is that gonna have on the, on our frontline services? And is is that a cost that at the moment you're willing to take?
So so you've got a mixture there of what the commissioners are saying that we need to do, what we know that we need to do, because you could on staff internally, and then how on earth we manage a budget when that's what we need, extra staff at the same time? Um as try and make the 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 cuts. If you look at, you know, you look at Mike's, Mike's team in Democratic Services, I don't know how they're they're still standing, and Lee's. You know, it's it, they're really under pressure. So the the uh the freezing of 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 the budget as we're going through, which Mel does quite regularly, and we're in the middle of that at the moment, so it's only certain things that that, sorry, everything is, you have to argue the case, put it like that, before the money is spent. That was, is starting to build up some money. There is, there is some uh money for the staffing and Lee's team, but we need to attract them. And the of of um moving out from the from the best value report and into the new world, which we're nearly there now, the the, it's almost like the the uh the culture change has happened, but the the message out there further out than Liverpool needs to be, it really has happened. We've got people across the country who are who are looking for uh those sorts of jobs, or they, the the council is looking for those sorts of jobs. So it's it's quite, it's quite a swirl at the moment to try and get people to come and work for Liverpool, even when we've got uh those positions in there. But they're, you know, they're more than welcome. Is that fair, Mel?
And well, and one of the questions that raises for me um is how much, you know, in terms of planning, being expected to, have already committed to filling back office, stationary back office staff? Given the because that that will inevitably mean that there's going to be a reduction in funding for frontline services then, doesn't it?
So there's some that is in place already, and that that's, Mel can explain where the money's come from for that. But again, we've got to make the decision about going forward and how we balance that within the budget and balance the budget. And we haven't got to that stage yet.
But you refer, sorry, you'd refer to the commissioners expressing a view on that. What was that view?
Well, but also Barry, sorry, Chair. Seventeen, and if we'd done it right in fifteen, it wouldn't have been so bad in seventeen. Seventeen. And if we'd done it right in 15, it wouldn't have been so bad in 17. And by the time 17 came in, it was a very, very high risk element in that report, sorry, the grading of that report. We wouldn't be where we are now. So how long have you been with us now for, Lee? A year or?
Chair, since November.
Not, the team has absolutely taken on board all of that pulling together of all of those pieces of work and all of that extra work that needs to be stitched together. They need extra staff. Some of that money has been found. Mel, do you want to explain how that's been found? So we have got some extra staffing in there, but that's only part of the jigsaw. We've got to then move forward.
There's a report coming to cabinet of improvement. There are some costs that will be non-recurrent or short term over two or three years, which we will fund from the improvement and recovery reserve of 10 million pound that we set aside. There are other costs that will need to be on a recurrent basis. And it's those costs which will form part of the budget proposals that we will be bringing forward to cabinet at the beginning of November. And then following consultation, the final proposals through to full council in February, March time. In the 33 million pound at the moment, there is three points of improvement costs included in that 33 million.